Good morning. The December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one virtual meeting of the Anorundel County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard. I know Ms. Pickard is trying to join. Mr. Volkey. Don't see Mr. Volkey here yet. Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Ms. Schewitt.
Present.
And Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Madam Chair, we seem to have six council members in attendance. Mr. Volkey is not here yet. We also have our Legislative Council and our county auditor in attendance.
Thank you. Before we begin, Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. While a virtual meeting of this type is not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act.
All right, we have a pretty significant list of legislation on our agenda today, so we're going to do as best we can to get through it. First, the first two items are both legislation proposed by Mr. Volkey, and since he has not arrived yet, I am going to suggest that we skip forward until he arrives and look at the County Executive's Bill Number one hundred dash twenty-one, if that is all right. Mr. Barron, does that work for you? And Admin?
We're happy to accommodate, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Tell us about one hundred dash twenty-one.
Sure. I am asking to join me at the virtual table Ms. Podowsky and Ms. Lovett from our Personnel Department, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. Bill one hundred dash twenty-one is a follow-up bill to the Charter Amendment. If you recall, we removed the provision that allowed, that limited, reemployment at fifteen hundred hours. Reemployment rules for retirees, however, had an unintended consequence with the removal of that as it relates to their pension. The reemployment rules for retirees are laid out in five dash one dash two oh three, and when an employee retires, they are given a packet with all those complicated rules. Retirees who return to work for the county are subject to an earnings offset depending on what type of position they have and what type of position they are rehired into, to be more clear. There are exceptions to rule, and they are governed under five dash one dash two oh three C. This legislation puts back the fifteen hundred hour cap for retirees hired under a temp or seasonal position. Ms. Podowsky or Ms. Lovett can answer any questions or add anything if I misstated the provisions of one hundred dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Do any of my colleagues have questions? All right. Well, thank you for that overview, and I suppose we will be moving on to the next bill, also a county executive, an executive branch bill, one oh one dash twenty-one. So, Mr. Barron, if you would not mind proceeding?
Not at all, not at all. I'm glad we knocked some of these ones out. Me at the table from our Board of Ed is Mr. Shagnovich from Wreckin' Parks. I believe Ms. Lays and Ms. Jackson were scheduled to join us, although I don't see them on my Brady Bunch. We'll do our best to answer any questions. Ms. Nederer, oh, there's Ms. Matthews. How you doing? Ms. Nederer from the Office of Law. One oh one dash twenty-one is related to a property in Millersville known as South Gate Old Mill Park. This property was originally conveyed to the county by the BOE back in nineteen eighty-two. Today, the county is looking to transfer the property back to the BOE for the development of a middle school to address growing, the growing population in the Millersville community. This is a much-needed school construction project, and this is an important step on it. It's about twenty-five acres located at eight-two-two-four Oakwood Road in Millersville, Maryland. Mr. Shagnovich, feel free to add anything, but we're going to ask you pass this bill at the appropriate time.
Good morning, Ela Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer, Anorundel County Public Schools. Appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the county. This has been a joint effort between Recreation and Parks and the Board of Ed to co-locate on a piece of property. The new school obviously come with a gymnasium and recreation amenities, but much of the recreation amenities that exist there today are going to remain and available to the citizenry of the area. So, it's a terrific project. Again, I appreciate the collaboration and urge your support when the bill comes up for a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that overview. Do any of my colleagues have questions for the panelists? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, the Old Mill Complex Master Plan is an important undertaking in our CIP going forward. It is a big, and has always been, the big juggernaut that's holding up lots of additional school construction and renovations farther down the list. So, if between now and December twentieth, anyone has any questions, I'm happy to forward that master plan. It is a series of seven schools. So, look it over, because this is the, we have a cascade of events happening over the next seven to eight years, getting this done for the community. It's extremely important to quality schools in the countywide. So, thanks.
Thank you, and I'll just ask one question for Mr. Shagnovich. Is this the site for the new Old Mill Middle South?
Yes, that's correct. It's the Old Mill Middle South relocation.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any further questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Shagnovich, and thank you, Admin. Going forward, it looks like, let's see, we've got Bill Number one oh three dash twenty-one, and Mr. Volkey is a cosponsor on this, but it looks like Ms. Fiedler is the lead sponsor. Ms. Fiedler, do you, are you prepared to go with this one alone?
Yes, I can.
I'm so sorry for the interruption. I did just want to say one thing real quick. We do have a rep here for Resolution sixty-three twenty-one, the Chair of the Charter Revision Commission, who has made, you know, made plans to be here at nine o'clock this morning to talk to you all a little bit about that resolution. So, I just wanted to point that out. Whether Mr. Volkey is able to join or not, we should try to be considerate of her time.
Absolutely. Maybe we'll just, I don't know, give him maybe another ten minutes or so, or maybe?
Yes, and I'm trying to reach him as well. So, we'll get there. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Ms. Fiedler, you said you're good to go solo on one oh three dash twenty-one?
I am.
All right. Thank you. Then you may have the floor.
Thank you. So, Bill one oh three twenty-one is really a clean-up to my previous bill, Bill eighty-two twenty. When I was working on that bill, which you remember was the zoning bill related to proximity to residential zone properties and gun ranges, I noticed gun ranges were allowed in C-three and C-four, but gunsmiths and ammunition sales were only permitted in C-four. So, this bill creates a consistency between the two commercial districts related to those two categories in our zoning code. And I just thank the Office of Planning and Zoning for their assistance with this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Mr. Barron, do you have, does Admin have anything to add?
I have our Deputy CAO, Ms. Lori Rhodes, with us, our OPC Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, and Ms. Lynn Miller, our OPC Expert. We have Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Yeah, from a planning perspective, I think the councilwoman described it well. It really becomes a policy decision for this council as to whether or not you want to expand this kind of activity out of C-four and into C-three. I have not done a full analysis of all the C-three that would open up under this bill, but happy to provide that as we get closer to the actual hearing date. So, with that, that's our thoughts on this right now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Do my colleagues have any questions for the sponsor or Admin? Yes, Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking at, I remember the bill, the previous bill about gun ranges, and I was wondering if the sponsor could discuss some of the conditions put on the gun ranges, and was there any thought to adding this as a conditional use in C-three? As I look through C-three in District Two, it really does change the landscape of where this type of retail activity would be allowed. I'm just curious if there's a little more detail about the policy decision here.
Certainly. I'm happy to answer that question. So, related to gun ranges, they are both special exception for C-three and C-four, and the special exception requirements are mostly, if not all, related to noise and proximity to road access, or road access to the actual establishment cannot go through residential areas. The permitted use for gunsmith and ammunition sales for C-four is a permitted use with no restrictions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, in looking at C-three, I mean, C-three and C-four are different for reasons. So, as we look at C-three, you'll find, at least in District Two, we're getting to shopping centers and retail areas that are very in close proximity to, for example, Glenburnie High School. I mean, is this, is there a consideration at all? I mean, this is a policy decision for the council. I'm just curious if additional conditions about proximities to schools or other kinds of restrictions limiting where in C-three gun sales could take place. Maybe it's not something that the council's concerned about. It's just an interesting thing as I look at C-three and District Two that I think it's worth discussing.
Certainly, and that is something that I reached out to Ms. Schewitt on. We looked at state law, and I believe the one area that we found was related to federal law and the fact that no, Ms. Schewitt helped me here. I think it was no firearms can be located within a school zone. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
I think you are, yes. Linda Schewitt, Legislative Council.
All right. Are there any additional questions or any follow-up here? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to Bill one oh four dash twenty-one. And Ms. Fiedler, this is again your bill, so you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, discussions on Bill one oh four twenty-one really began last winter when a county bus company owner who's interested in expansion brought it to my attention that there is no language in the zoning code that guides bus companies on where they can locate within the county other than a small mention to a two thousand and one bill for residentially zoned properties. We currently have fifteen bus companies across the county. They are located in a variety of zones, R-A, R-L-D, R-one, R-two, C-four, and W-two. So, if a bus company wished to expand to a second location or close a smaller existing location to move to a larger parcel for expansion, there is no guidance or regulation in our code. So, Bill one oh four creates conditional uses in C-one through C-three, a permitted use in C-four, a permitted use for school bus facilities in all industrial districts, and conditional use in the other zoning districts categories, specifically small business, with the added condition of a minimum of four and a half acres, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Admin, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I got the same team with me, DCAO for land use, Ms. Rhodes, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Kenny from Law. Not much to add. I think we don't oppose the concept of looking to create a specialized term in the code for school bus facilities. I think trying to understand exactly, though, what the real issue is at play here. We have plenty of these located around the county. Understand that the code was working fine, so not familiar with the situation that brought forward the bill. Would like to dig in a little bit more, particularly when you get out of the industrial and sort of intensive commercial zones, what the impact of this bill would be around the county.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Yes, Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share the concern. I understand needing to put, I'm fine with acknowledging school bus facilities into the code in commercial and industrial. I'm a little, I'm getting a little anxious about small business, seeing where small business districts are in my community. In District Two, they are dotting areas that are very, very close to residential. And I know in one particular area of Queenstown, they are suffering greatly at the hands of unintended consequences from previous zoning designations. And I really am concerned about overburdening certain communities that have these legacy small business areas with really an industrial, heavy commercial use. So, I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity for a few more conditions to be put on? If this is helping the one guy kind of bill, maybe we can parlay this a little better so it doesn't have unintended consequences across the county.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Ms. Fiedler, would you care to respond to that suggestion?
Yes, certainly, and I'm absolutely willing to work with my colleagues on this bill. As you may remember, we did have in the GDP a parcel that was trying to change land use. This council, including myself, did not support, and OPC did not support that effort. There is a need for successful companies that have been able to stay afloat, to have flexibility in relocating if the environment so deems it necessary. So, I'm absolutely happy to take a look at it. I will say, I think that this draft or a bill that you see before you is draft number fourteen or something, if I'm remembering Ms. Schewitt. We have really worked hard on this bill to try to get it into the best possible form. I know Ms. Lynn Miller has shared her thoughts on the bill over the period of several months, and this is where we landed, but certainly that's what these work sessions are for, and I'm happy to work with any of my colleagues who'd like to massage this a bit.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. Pete Barron with the Administration. I apologize. I should really read my notes in more complete detail before I toss the ball back. Ms. Miller, as Councilwoman Fiedler noted, OPC has been in communication on this bill. Ms. Miller has some existing concerns that still remain on the bill, and I'm just going to ask Ms. Miller to talk through a couple of them for the council's benefit right now.
Sure, happy to. Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. As Ms. Fiedler noted, yes, we did have a lot of back-and-forth conversations with her, and we do appreciate that she did incorporate a number of our concerns into the bill as introduced. We appreciate that, but some of the other concerns that we had noted were not addressed in this version of the bill. And those would include, I think, starting with the districts where, the zoning districts where the use would be allowed, although in most cases, it is allowed as a conditional use, which does help. We are concerned about allowing this type of use in either the C-one or the C-two district. It doesn't seem to be consistent with the purpose and intent of those zoning districts. I would say the same about the small business district and probably even the W-one district. And so, I think in our minds, it just wasn't clear that there was, that there was such a large demand for additional facilities that it would really warrant opening up these additional districts to this use. C-four, probably W-two and W-three would be fine. And then there are a few of the conditional use requirements that are included under Title Ten in the bill that we would like to have some additional conversation about to see if we can come up with something that we're a little more comfortable with, and particularly the addition of allowing what we would consider heavy vehicle repair uses such as bodywork, engine rebuilding, engine reconditioning and painting. These are things listed under requirement number nine. That type of heavier auto repair is not a use that we allow in those lower commercial or SB districts. So, that sort of summarizes our key concerns. I think there is also one condition that would need a technical correction for it to be accurate, and we can talk to you about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I see. Go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Miller, I know that we worked on this extensively, and I acknowledge that the bill as introduced doesn't cover every concern to finality, but specifically with nine, I cannot remember. This specific condition has changed over time. But the reason that we have it as, or I have it as, allowed indoors only was really to kind of mask the more intensive repair work that you're talking about, so that could not be done outdoors, and indoors kind of shields those activities and keeps them contained within a certain structure. And then your other concerns I hear, and it's one of the reasons that we have the acre, minimum acreage requirement of one acre in commercial and industrial, and then the four and a half in small business. But I'm happy to work with my colleagues on this.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. And Ms. Pickard?
Thank you. I have to get used to Zoom again. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I I can't really emphasize enough. I'm in the middle of, I have a community that is in the middle of really unintended or potentially intended consequences of zoning decisions made thirty and forty years ago that are very negatively impacting the residential communities surrounding it with this kind of use not being appropriate for both the size of the road, the corners that heavy trucks are now driving down through Queenstown. And I just, I really think we need to pause and make sure as we update the county code, we're acknowledging all those potential unintended consequences for the surrounding communities. C-one is certainly those smaller parcels that are just outside of residential areas, right on the corners of neighborhoods. Small business is also, those are tucked into residential areas, and a bus depot is, I'm just concerned about it going forward. This may help, this may help one constituent, but when we update the county code, it affects communities all across the county for a potential of really negative impact for their quality of life and safety. So, I don't know how to get to the right solution, because I don't know who we're trying to help here, but I can't let it impact other communities across the county potentially in a harmful way. I can't tell you the mess we have going on in Queenstown right now, that there's no remedy to decisions made forty years ago as land is turned over to new owners. So, I'm in, it's a big pickle. I'm not trying to be difficult, but this is why we are put in the positions we are to make good, solid decisions when we update the county code.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Ms. Rhodes?
Good morning. Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. I would like to echo some of the comments that have been made, particularly that of Councilwoman Pickard. We have to remember that Plan twenty forty calls for implementation, and one of those requirements is to reinstate purpose and intent. Zoning districts do have purpose and intent. It's based on compatibility intensity, because the goal is to protect residential uses, as Ms. Pickard has indicated. So, for those reasons, this bill needs a lot more work. SB is a zone that's intended for transition from residential to small neighborhood commercial. So, we have to ensure that we don't have these long-term unintended consequences with uses that are incompatible with the surrounding uses.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Do any of my colleagues have additional questions? I see Ms. Schewitt. Go ahead, Ms. Schewitt.
Thank you. Linda Schewitt, Legislative Council. I was wondering whether OPC could tell us either now or after this work session how many parcels there are of small business that are at least four and a half acres.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I don't think we can tell you that right now, but we should be able to get that information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, last call for questions from my colleagues. All right. In that case, we are going to move backwards to the beginning of the agenda, and thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield, for your patience today. We're going to move back to Resolution Number sixty-three dash twenty-one. This was introduced by Mr. Volkey, and so, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Good morning, everyone. Apologies, I was a little late this morning. So, the resolution basically tries to help a situation that I've seen in the last few Charter Revision Commissions. Their meetings, there seems to be a strong push by the Revision Commission to get a map done by December thirty-first, and I completely understand that, because that was the charge that this body gave to the Charter Revision Commission when we initially passed our resolution directing them on what we'd like them to look at. However, based on the conversation that's happened in the last few meetings, it does seem like the Commission could benefit potentially from a little more time. Additionally, I have concerns about the method that the Charter Revision Commission is moving forward with maps, considering that this is now well into the holiday season, and we're putting out maps that are going to impact this county for the next ten years. I have concerns that constituents are not having an opportunity to fully and fairly weigh in on the maps, that this process may be moving a little too quickly at a time of year that's a serious challenge for many people to participate in this process. It's not to denigrate or take away from the great work that the Charter Revision Commission is doing, because having watched their meetings, every single person there is extremely serious about their task. They're working very hard. They're doing everything they can do. But I have spoken to a few of the members on the Commission, and the pace that they're working is frankly an awful lot for a volunteer body. They've been meeting many times a week. Oftentimes, the meetings are going beyond just the scheduled meeting time. They're having conversations with each other outside of that. They're meeting with people from Planning and Zoning. They're meeting with each other. So, they're doing great work, and they're doing everything they can. But I think that at a certain point, we as a body have to recognize when we have maybe given an unfair assignment to a group and asked them to do an awful lot of work in a very short period of time, which it feels like we have done. So, with that, I wanted to give them some flexibility with this resolution by adjusting the deadlines and giving them the opportunity to dig into this map a little bit more if they choose to, and also allow for more time for public participation on the map. That's the intention of the resolution, and I look forward to hearing everyone's thoughts. and also allow for more time for public participation on the map. That's the intention of the resolution and I look forward to hearing everyone's thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Mansfield, I would like you to weigh in and as the Chair of the Charter Review Commission. And again, appreciate you taking the time to come to speak with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's nice to see all of you this morning. And I appreciate Councilmember Volkey, your, your interest in trying to address some of the challenges that we have. I guess before I would thought I would kind of give a history, but of where we've been and how kind of where we are sitting right now. But before doing so, I do, I know that Steve Kaisigler is on the meeting this morning. On his team, Mark Burt, as well as Christina Pampa, and your legal team, Laurie Blair Classmeyer and Linda Schewitt, who I can't find her box at the moment. But I want to thank all of you and the hard work that they've been putting forth on the, on the Office of Planning. They've been doing kind of a, a yeoman's job with all these maps and the various iterations that they have prepared for us and really want to thank them. So, yeah, so so far, the Charter Review Commission, we have had seven meetings. Our seventh meeting was last night and that was our first public meeting. We have another public meeting this Thursday. That one will be virtual. So I'm hoping we'll have more individuals actually sign up to share their views with us virtually. Last night at the public hearing, we had two individuals speak. And those two individuals, actually, they have been with us whole, all, every step of the way. They've attended all of our meetings so far. From this that we have, did have, we've had several, seven meetings so far. And I guess it was our second meeting. We did hear from the legal staff just about, you know, some of the challenges and laying out options for us, saying that if we felt we needed more time, there, there was an opportunity for that. And legally, under the charter, that was something we could put forth. At that point, we discussed as a commission, I believe we had broad consensus among the members that we understood that. But we also set a goal. We know that the intent of the resolution with the date in the resolution and the intent of the council at that time was that we finish our work and we actually have proposed map by December thirty-first to give to you. So we moved forward with that charge and we had broad consensus in, in doing so. I guess I, I will say, whereas I appreciate Councilmember Volkey, your, the resolution and bringing the issue up. I guess I was, I mean, as, as the Chair, I guess I, I felt more from a process perspective. If we, if we needed more time as a commission, that you guys appointed us to serve in this role and that, you know, we should decide as a commission and request that from you if we feel we need more time. So I appreciate that actually we're not taking it to the last council meeting. I know it would be on your agenda again for this upcoming Monday meeting. You know, we did have a broad conversation last week. I will say, you know, I, I don't want to say flounder is the right word, but obviously we have seven individuals. We have differing views and trying to, you know, grasp the situation. And honestly, I'm trying to look at the, the GIS data and all these mapping things that they have, that planning has sent to us. You know, for being layman like we are, it's kind of, it was a little difficult at first to try to get a, get a sense of where we, we were going. But, um, yes, we did a small group of three individuals got together, worked on maps. So at our meeting last, last night, actually, we did have, we had two maps now that we are out for public comment. I really feel like we have moved forward considerably in the last, really probably week and a half to two weeks, where I think we do have some proposed maps. We have another three iterations that Planning and Zoning pulled together were simple adjustment maps that we are, are still considering. However, as we, as the, the smaller work group went to move forward, we had one simple adjustment map that they discussed in more detail. We had another map that a member of the commission put forth. And there were several changes to that map and that was actually was also discussed last night. So I really, I feel that we have moved forward considerably. I know we still have a couple of weeks before the end of the year. And I think in last night in our discussion, I, I still think the majority members of the commission feel that we can still meet this deadline of December thirty-first. You know, speaking, to be sure I accurately represent all of, all of their interests. I know there is one individual that does feel somewhat strongly that we should have some more time. But considering where we are, I mean, we do have a pretty, I'm not sure if some of you tuned in last night or had a chance to look at some of the maps. They're on the website now. You know, I think, you know, one of the maps is making considerable changes. And I, I don't know even if we had more time, what other iterations we would possibly come, come up with at this point. So I, I think last night, I think the, we do have, as I said, we had the discussion. I think there was a majority of members that still felt, you know, we're moving forward. We have one more public hearing. We want to get more public comments. So Thursday night, after we have public comment, we will deliberate the maps in greater detail as a commission. And I think the feeling is at this point from the majority does that we could still move forward and actually present maps to you guys in, in a timely manner. Now, I don't know, we could find Thursday night. We have fifty people signed up and we hear a number of different types of comments than we expect. And maybe that might change our thoughts at that point in time. But I, I think at this point, you know, I, you know, the majority, I think we feel that we can still get our work done by the thirty-first. So I guess I would, I'd like a little more time. Maybe I could report back through Ms. Corby or something after the meeting on the Thursday evening to kind of give you a better sense of anything that's changed at that point in time. I will say there was one member that did ask, as I said, we have two iterations now that have been put out for public comment. There was iteration four B, which was taking a simple adjustment map and making some adjustments to, to the districts. And then we have a more broad expansive map that's kind of a redistricting approach that we labeled as six B. Those are the two options. There was a request by one of the commission members asking if the council would be willing to say they would accept either one of those two options. Obviously, you know, we are, we are a commission, but we are making recommendations to you. And as a council, you have the authority to, you can accept what we put forth. You can, you know, look at things and make some other changes to it. So I don't know if that's a reasonable request to make, but I did share with that I would have mentioned that to you in the conversation this morning. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or provide any, any further details at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield. I see a couple of my colleagues have questions. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Ms. Mansfield and the entire committee. I know obviously the census data coming late was what caused all this, just like for the congressional and legislative map. So we certainly know the source. It wasn't that. But again, I want to thank you for your work and everything that you're doing. I did want to make a comment though. You know, I, I was, started my work in public office about twenty years ago as a community association president and always followed the precincts and data. And of course, precinct where I live has been split up six or seven times for several reasons. But I want to remind everyone in the county's history that I'm aware of that each time there's been a bipartisan vote to get a map passed on time. And part of that is because of the deadline date of folks who have applied, you know, for, for date. And then second, also, and, and this is a question, because I, I think it's, this is very important for the matter of public record. This is for P and Z. Could you please describe how you draw maps? It's my understanding that you do not look at Democrat, Republican, looking at age, other things, that you're simply looking at communities of interest. And, and I know this has been stated at the commission, but I think this is important as far as how it's chosen, the other thing. And, and I'll make this last comment. We had a constituent in our last meeting that, that brought up a great point about certain council members now represent more people than others. And part of this is apportionment, just like in Congress, you have forty, four and thirty-five members of Congress that are apportioned by population. And so that is critical, right? Because you want one person, one vote, unequally. But again, Mr. Kaisio, could you please address how the maps that, that you drew were put together? Because I, I think that's an important piece so people understand that. Because I know there's been a question, can I create my own map? Can the council make this? I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I'm, I'm going to try and be as succinct as I can because it's actually answering that question is very, very complicated. But we start with base maps of how the current election districts are, are, how they exist. And there's a certain number of people who exist within them. We have a census every ten years, so the population grows. It shifts to a degree where we have births, where we have, you know, in migration, out migration. But the idea is that we have seven election districts. We're going to remain with seven election districts. And we're trying initially to look at just base population. And if we need to make adjustments, adjustments in the districts to accommodate that, we do. It doesn't necessarily take into account any social, you know, demographic income type information, although we can. The way redistricting works is we have to use the census tracts and block groups as the baseline. They do not necessarily follow, I'm going to say, community areas or town centers. And so it does make it more difficult, but we're making maps based on the guidance and requests we're getting from the, the redistricting commission. And we've probably produced, I don't know, fifteen to twenty different versions of them. What we can do is when we redraw the lines to take into account population shifts, there will be a corresponding, if you want to say, accounting of the socioeconomic demographic income type information. So we can do that, but we're not directly trying to achieve something with that information. It gets really complicated. While we have to use census tracts and block groups, we also have to be very mindful of things like where we have major roads. If we had a mountain range, which we don't, but we have a number of peninsulas that are separated by water bodies. And we use a, a software from a company called Esri, which is what most of the jurisdictions in America use. And, and Esri has gotten more and more sophisticated over time because they have bought up most of the smaller redistricting software companies. So this, this software system is, is actually pretty sophisticated and to a certain degree, we can make maps in real time while we're having a meeting. If you go in and look at the data that we've prepared, when we change a line, we're showing the impacts of that change geographically. How big is that area? That may go from, you know, District three to four or five to three. Geographically, how large it is, what communities are impacted, how many people would shift within that? And when you make those adjustments, you can, if you, when I say go into layer after layer after layer in areas of detail. And, and I think that's what gets to be pretty important and it's probably one of the factors that is affecting the, the, the commission's ability to reach, if you want to say, a unanimous point of view on what they would like to recommend because it's very, very dynamic. And it, and there's a lot of things that, that change and, and different commission members may have different objectives. So I don't know if that really answered your question. It's, it's very technical, but we're working with a base map that evolves. It morphs and it can morph and evolve in a whole bunch of different ways. We have a parameter where you can't make a change in a district that is, and, and Laurie Claire, Laurie Blair Classmeyer may have to explain some of this. But there's a deviation rate of ten percent that you can't move things around. So there's a lot of criteria. It's almost like a, a conditional use where you can do these things if it meets this criteria, if that helps.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, a series of questions, but I will, I will do one at a time for now. I, I have, well, I have a lot of questions. So in Ananquin County, our council manic districts, we're quite fortunate that as they're, they're mapped currently, they're compact. They, they're apportioned. We've had some growth, obviously, in, in two, in, in one and four, yeah, one and four. So because we have good, I think, conceptual districts now that are serving the community well, I'm concerned that there's some, I'm concerned about what happens when we, if we can't seem to as a commission and a council find a simple adjustment that meets the, the appropriate deadlines. Maybe I'm naive. I'm not exactly sure why we need to push it forward into the spring. So I kind of also, I would like to know from the sponsor and from the Office of Law what that does to filing deadlines and the twenty twenty-two election and the twenty twenty-four Board of Ed election. Because now, since the last ten years, we now have Board of Ed seats that are attached to council manic districts. So if we don't act, what does that do for representation moving forward? I'm not sure who I, who should answer that first.
Are there any of our panelists or is this maybe Stephen Cut? Right. I see the sponsor willing to chime in. And, and Laurie Blair Classmeyer. I will let the sponsor weigh in first and then I will let Ms. Blair Classmeyer chime in as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Classmeyer, if I get anything wrong, I know you'll help me out. So my understanding, Ms. Pickard, is that if we do not pass a map by prior to the filing deadline in February of twenty twenty-two, that all of us will run again in the districts that we are currently in. The maps will remain unchanged. We will move through the twenty twenty-two election in our current districts. If we pass a map after the filing deadline, so after February of twenty twenty-two, at that point, the new maps would take effect for the twenty-four election, which we would not run in because the council's not elected in twenty-four, but the school district members who run in council districts as well, school board, excuse me, they would run in the new districts. And then anyone running for the council in twenty-six, which none of us can do because we would all be term limited at that point, those new members would run in the new districts in twenty twenty-six. So that's my understanding of practically speaking, how the process will work from an electoral standpoint. In terms of the representation question, for instance, Ms. Rodgian's district is underpopulated. I think she's got somewhere around seventy-six thousand people in her district. Mr. Pruski's district is very overpopulated. I think he's close to ninety-one thousand in his district. So the challenge of different districts having significantly different sizes for this election. Well, to be clear, in twenty eighteen, when we ran, our districts weren't all the same size either. And so if we run in twenty-two, it would be the same situation. I suppose that it's possible theoretically, and this is where Ms. Classmeyer, Ms. Blair Classmeyer can jump in. But theoretically, you could see a taxpayer or someone who's a voter say, I'm going to file a lawsuit and challenge these maps and say that they violate equal protection and that they don't give me the same voice. For instance, I live in Annapolis and I am one of seventy-six thousand versus I live in West County and I'm one of ninety-one thousand. My voice is diluted vis a vis somebody in Annapolis, so I'm not similarly situated. I suppose that that is a lawsuit that could be filed. However, if the council has passed new maps and we've run in those districts in twenty-two and after the twenty-two filing deadline, we have now actually passed new maps instead in twenty-six, these will be the maps. I struggle to see how the court would deal with that. But again, Ms. Blair Classmeyer can tell me if there's case law that suggests something different. So that's kind of a response to your question about representation, how it would work in the next elections electorally. And then how people who we represent could potentially view these maps if they felt like there was some unfairness, their recourse would be the courts. I have other things I want to add, but I'm going to leave it there because we're on this topic.
Ms. Blair Classmeyer.
Thank you. Laurie Blair Classmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I agree with what Mr. Volkey said. And as far as the challenge, any challenges, if we did not meet the deadline, the February twenty, February filing deadline for the twenty twenty-two election, we've looked at that issue. We don't think there is any issue. We are following our procedures in coming up with redistricting. The commission technically has a year under the charter. What's thrown this into kind of a crazy scheduling issue is the, is the lateness of the receiving the census data. The, the, the case law that discusses this ten percent that everyone is talking about, the ten percent variance is in the area of redistricting. There, we, there are not a lot of cases on not redistricting, I guess, is the, kind of the opposite of that. And so therefore, we don't think that that's, it's a shoe legally not to have a map before the February filing deadline for the twenty twenty-two election.
Thank you, Ms. Blair Classmeyer. And Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so it's my colleague's intention with this resolution to extend the deadline for the Charter Commission to keep working with the intent that this council would not change maps until the next, until twenty twenty-four and twenty-six elections. Just give me a nod, Mr. Volkey, if that's what you're saying. Okay, that's not what you're saying. Okay, so, but, but I did want to talk about Annapolis because it's my understanding there's, there's potentially a pretty, uh, an error in population count from the census to the tune of about forty-five hundred residents. And I understand that the county is taking steps to address that in some census error correction process. So does that have, my concerns, I mean, I, I hope we're doing that if that's really the case, to get that sorted out. Because I'm sure the population there has ramifications for other kinds of things related to funds and, and whatever. But that really, that population shift or, or error in the Annapolis District Six area is the only reason why I would consider trying not to meet our deadline. If that changes how we shift districts and grab people and, and move people so that the apportionment is more appropriate, that's the only thing that I think keeping us from making a simple adjustment to our maps. I don't understand, I don't really understand, unless we're trying to gerrymander in some way to meet some unspoken, unspoken motive that I, I'm not, that's the elephant in the room here. I don't know why we can't do a simple adjustment to our maps and, and be done with it.
Ms. Blair Klassmeyer, are you able to respond to that?
So, so, yeah, so the, the error in Annapolis, we just, it was discovered by OPZ is the census block for the Naval Academy came back as zero. And in the past, I mean, it is included in our census numbers and it should be somewhere around forty-five hundred. Um, OPZ may be better able to address this, but from the discussions we've had, correcting a census, um, block is not a quick or simple process. Um, it can take some time to do. Um, we've also had people looking at how this is treated. Um, for example, the Air Force Academy, West Point, and also the places like College Park and Salisbury where we know there are, um, those college populations. But historically, those forty-five hundred or so people who are at the Naval Academy as students are included in our census and we're attempting to get that corrected. And yeah, I see Mr. Kai Ziegler's hand and he can explain a little better that process, says I'm sure.
Good morning again, Steve Kai Ziegler. Um, Ms. Blair, Ms. Klassmeyer is absolutely correct. We have identified the problem. Um, we're starting the process to, um, request a correction from the Census Bureau. In my experience, those, um, corrective, um, mechanisms, uh, can take many months to a couple of years to, um, go through their process. Um, we're also researching, um, a variety of different military, um, academies in addition to in, um, college institutions in the state of Maryland. Um, what we found with the military institutions, both in Colorado Springs and with the, uh, um, with the army, that the Census Bureau did count them. So there is clearly an inconsistency. We're also trying to see how the Census Bureau captured, um, students or faculty from University of Maryland, Salisbury State, Frostburg, some others. So we do see an inconsistency. We recognize it officially. We have to use the census numbers in this redistricting effort, but what we're trying to do is like put an asterisk next to that. And at the bottom of a page, when we're using this information, trying to acknowledge that there was likely to be forty-five hundred additional people in this, um, census tract that, that we're trying to take account to unofficially because we can't do it officially.
Um, thank you, Mr. Kai Ziegler. I just want to add a comment. It occurred to me that the timing of the census, um, you know, during the early months of twenty twenty, if I'm correct, would have also coincided with, um, you know, significant parts of the COVID lockdown when students may have been sent home. So I'm wondering how that may have impacted the count and if, you know, if that's at play. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that thought out there.
So, so, yeah, if I, if I could, Steve, as I were planning zoning officer, we, we thought about that. And that's why we checked with, uh, West Point and the Air Force Academy because they had the same situation through COVID and, um, the census did count those. Keep in mind, this is like my third or fourth census because I'm, I'm getting old. And it's pretty common, um, through a ten-year census for, um, big areas to be missed. And that's why almost every jurisdiction I know of goes through this process for the correction. But it's a long tedious bureaucratic process, um, to be successful. We always won, but it took a lot of effort. And, uh, I, I mean, this wasn't easy. I think this should be an easy one to fix because it's such an obvious error. But it hasn't been corrected yet and we don't have the ability to officially count those forty-five hundred until that doesn't happen. It doesn't mean we can't unofficially take it into account.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kai Ziegler. Um, I may have a follow-up question, but I have a couple colleagues who I know have been waiting. So I, I apologize. I'm not sure who was next, but I think it was Mr. Volkey. So, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. Um, just to address some comments that my colleague from District Two mentioned, uh, the purpose is not to say that we have to not pass a map before the February twenty-second filing deadline next year or whatever the date is. If the commission works through and they pass a map and they get it done by December thirty-first or January fifth or whatever it may be, they can still do that. There's nothing in here that precludes them from doing the map sooner. The purpose of the resolution is to give them a little breathing room and say, if you want a little more time, we're not breathing down your necks as the council insisting that you have this done by the thirty-first because we recognize that we gave you an absolutely huge task and sometimes that takes time. If they still want to get it done by December thirty-first, there's nothing in this resolution that blocks them from doing it sooner than that date. It simply gives them a little extra time. So that's, that's the intention here. Um, the census block error in Annapolis has been addressed. I'm gonna ask Ms. Corby, if she can, to share some information because something that my council, or my colleague, excuse me, um, Councilman Pruski noted was that the, the council has always passed a map, right? We've always gotten it done in time. And I certainly don't disagree with him. I think he's absolutely right. The council has done that. But I think the timing has been a little bit different. And so Ms. Corby has a chart that she's put together. And I'm just gonna ask her to share that with the council and then talk through that so that we can understand the timing and how this iteration or this round differs from previous rounds.
Sure. Um, thanks, Mr., thank you, Mr. Volkey. Um, the chart that I have brought up on screen is a chart that was given to the Charter Revision Commission early on. Um, might have been actually at one of their first meetings and the, at the end of October, beginning of November. Um, it's just a, you know, an attempt to sort of give an overview of timing and how it has worked going back to nineteen ninety. So in the first column, you see election years. Those are, um, those years are highlighted in gray. The green spots are sort of, um, highlighting or emphasizing where there would have been a census either done and/or released. Um, and so you would subsequently see the Charter Revision Commission formation. And then after the Charter Revision Commission did their work, you would have seen a redistricting bill, uh, at least one. Um, so I think it should be pretty self-explanatory. Um, I will explain the reason that you see in twenty thirteen, three bills. One was defeated, one was passed, that was fourteen thirteen. And then Bill thirty-nine thirteen came in and did some, um, not corrections, but really kind of lining it up with what happened at the state level and with the Congress as well. It was kind of a reconciliation done by the Board of Elections. Uh, so this was a cleanup bill. Um, the same thing happened back in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, two thousand and three. Bill ninety-one oh one was the first redistricting bill that was done by the council at that time. The subsequent bills were because of some nuances picked up on by the Board of Elections that needed to be reconciled. Um, nineteen ninety-one, that was a, uh, an extremely organized year. As you can see, they had, um, Charter Revision Commission, one bill done. So again, this is just kind of highlighting the, you know, how time has worked going back to nineteen ninety where you're comparing an election year, census materials being released, the formation of the commission and then the redistricting bill or bills done by the county council at that time. I'm happy to send this to all of the council members as well so that everybody has a copy of this. And I will stop sharing it.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, I'm gonna let, um, Mr. Kai Ziegler jump in because I'm assuming he wants to respond to this aspect of it. No, your hand was up from before, possibly.
Madam Chair, um, I, if I could also, um, help Ms. Mansfield out here. I think that she has a set time that she can be with us this morning. So I will, I think maybe we need to check in with this, uh, Ms. Mansfield as well.
Um, so I see it's ten o'clock and I'm not sure what your timeframe is, but it is, you know, the top of the hour. So, uh, I don't, um, if you'd like to chime in and add anything before I go on to my other colleagues, um, I know that we all would appreciate your, your thoughts.
Yeah, uh, thank, thank you. Yeah, I, I can spend a few more minutes. So, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, then I will, um, go on to Ms. Fiedler, who I believe was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I have two other questions, but since Ms. Corby just showed that Excel chart, I'm gonna lead with that question. Um, based on that chart, February twenty thirteen stood out to me because it looks like there were three months between the passage of the council bill and then the, the cleanup bill from what the state sent back. So taking this into consideration in the discussions that the Charter Revision Commission has had to date, if, if this council were to receive and pass a, um, map uh, earlier in twenty twenty-two, understanding that jurisdictions across the state are dealing with this, what is the likelihood that we will get a cleanup, um, recommendation from the state? Do a cleanup map and have it pass before the filing de- deadline of February twenty twenty-two?
If there's someone who feels appropriate to respond to that, uh, Ms. Blair Klassmeyer, thank you.
I can try. Um, I think there's a high likelihood that we will have a cleanup bill. Um, because the state is also doing, you know, its redistricting in January. It's, it's, uh, state districts, it's doing its congressional, or it's done its congressional districts in December or doing them in December. So there's likely to be a cleanup bill. The, the, the deadline, the twenty, the February twenty-second deadline, I'm, I'm not sure anybody's really talked about the timeline there. But, um, it, it would require introduction on either January third or January eighteenth. It could be introduced on January eighteenth. It would be out of sequence, however, as, as Ms. Corby pointed out to the commission last night because in, there are meetings in February, which are February seventh and February twenty-first. It would be, I mean, it's inconceivable that you would pass a redistricting bill on the twenty-first, which is the day before the filing deadline. So this really needs to be passed by the seventh. It could be if it was introduced on the eighteenth and was not amended. So, um, we're really looking at kind of this January eighteenth. So the question is, I think, comes down to, could this council and pick a plan wants to move forward with, introduce a bill to be heard on the eighteenth of January, to be heard on the seventh of February and have state corrections in time, well, before January eighteenth because it couldn't be amended on February, it couldn't be amended and, um, to be, to pass on February seventh. I think that's unlikely that, and I think that at some point there will be tweaks based on the state districts. This, I mean, all of the counties have to submit their redistricting plans to their local boards of election. There have to be tweaks based on those maps. So I think it's li- likely to see tweaks. I think it's unlikely that they could occur on that scheduling path for passage by February seventh.
Thank you, Ms. Blair Klassmeyer. I see Ms. Mansfield, um, hand up. And I know I have some colleagues who've been waiting for a while, but I know she also is on a timeline. So Ms. Mansfield, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, and yes, thank you, um, Ms. Blair Klassmeyer. To talk through, also because there's a holiday in there, whereas I think, you know, if we are, we have another public hearing and we are able to deliberate Thursday evening and start focusing and, you know, voting on what proposals we would, would like to send to you. In all likelihood, it would be some sort of a draft proposal that we could get completed by, by the thirty-first. But at least it would be, I guess, in our discussions, we were saying we were hoping it would be at least the math, that you would have those for consideration. And then early in the new year, we could then finalize our, our report. I guess that's how we were thinking, we could, that could move forward with getting our work completed by the thirty-first. But I think this also because the holiday makes it really difficult. Um, and obviously the Planning and Zoning Department, I know some staff has time off as well around the holidays. So trying to get a fond of report by the thirty-first might be difficult. But we did feel if we were able, with our goal being set, moving forward, we could provide at least have, have a draft, a draft or an interim report. However, we would want to refer to that. We can do our best to get that to you by the thirty-first. So sorry, I wanted to just wanted to clarify that because I forgot to address it earlier. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Um, I, I think Ms. Lacy was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so as what I understand, and hopefully Ms. Blair Klassmeyer, you'll correct me if I say anything that is incorrect. But one of the things I understand is that a council member can propose a redistricting map if they want to. Um, another thing I understand is that we have in this entire year of the commission, um, being, um, an entity, that they could propose maps later on beyond the date that we've set. Um, and that if, for example, one group of folks wants to pursue a, a sort of a reimagining of the districts where you realign them, you know, based on what we've developed into as opposed to just moving around the edges of the population, that, that could be fine. And it could be done later and this council could take it up or a later council could take it up. But we're not limited in time in that sense. The main limitation, uh, and I think, or you could also say, opportunity and also obligation that we have is to take the data that we do have now and try to balance our districts by population because they are too far out of balance. And since to me, uh, from looking at the data that we have, all the support that we've put forth for the commission, um, and having been chair when we did the resolution originally tasking the commission with these deadlines, no, we knew what deadlines the commission would be facing. And so, um, you know, we, they weren't unreasonable. They were unfortunate. Nobody wanted to be in this situation. We didn't have control over how that came about. But if we focus on the immediate goal of the apportionment and balancing across the county, that to me, from what I'm hearing, is still, um, a very doable task. And we might, um, you know, perhaps be prepared for a couple of alternate possibilities. If, if say, um, suppose the commission agrees, we're trying to get to the, uh, balanced numbers, but we might disagree as to whether, um, you know, this particular slice of District Four should go to District Two or should it go to District Five or should it go to District Six or District Seven, whatever. Um, that maybe you'll have a couple of alternatives that you've sort of narrowed it down to. Whether or not the commission does that, I think council members are certainly on notice that they can do that themselves and have that available to be introduced, um, at our first meeting in January so we can get all the options out on the table and do what we're supposed to do, which is make a decision and get, you know, uh, closer to equally apportioned districts. So that's the way I see things.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Um, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Corby, you, you put up a really nice chart um, from previous, um, Charter Review Commissions. I'm wondering, um, what I haven't been able to see is what those Charter Commissions proposed to, to previous councils. I did understand, um, I caught the tail end of last night's, uh, meeting, um, in between the football game that was on. And, um, I, I heard that ten years ago, the Charter Review Commission sent about ten maps to the council. And somehow the council, in a compromised bipartisan fashion, created the maps that we currently have. So I'm hearing from Ms. Mansfield, the chair of the commission, that you've got two, three, potentially four maps that you're very close to being able to say, here, council, these are some things, these are some thoughts on this. Is that, is that where we are? And is that with, with a, with a situation with the, the commission bringing forth those, those three or four maps to the council? Is that, would the commission then feel like they had done their due diligence and can move on to the rest of the Charter Review?
Madam Chair, to step out for a second. So is the Vice Chair, I'm stuck here. Ms. Klassmeyer, did you have a response to that or anyone else? Or you don't have to, just figure it out.
I think that's Ms., I think the question was field, yeah.
Would you like me to respond? Yeah.
Yes, yes, please. Sorry, Ms. Mansfield.
No, that's okay. I mean, yes, I mean, I think, you know, the discussion we had, we, we have two maps. No, that's okay. I mean, yes, I mean, I think, you know, the discussion we had, we have two maps that a subgroup, a small group worked on. So we have those two proposals right there. I would say we have not had our deliberation to say, okay, do we support including these maps in what would be an interim or final report? And I think that's the discussion we will have once we have the public hearing. But yes, we also have those other simple adjustment iterations that we have talked and Planning and Zoning has presented to us. And I think, yes, I mean, last night in our discussion, where we ended up, as I said, there was, you know, there was an individual that feels strongly that we should not move forward at this time, but I think generally across the rest of the members, that we felt, you know, we have two options out there. That's a public comment. Started a lot of feedback, anyway. Okay. Not sure where that was. But anyway, I think, I mean, yes, I would like to say, I mean, I would have a better sense Thursday once we continue getting public comment, and we actually have our deliberations on the map. But based on our conversation last night, and a large number of members still agree with this goal of moving forward, that we have these iterations, I think we can have that discussion, and it's, you know, I think it's likely we could have, yes, have maps, that are proposed maps to you by the end of the year for your discussion.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Looks like Ms. Councilwoman Fiedler was next.
Thank you. So I wanted to go back, I know we've talked about the previous resolution a few times, 5021. At the time, 5021 came before the council, I don't think it, I don't think there was a clear understanding for either the folks that we were appointing or the entire body, that we technically, or the commission technically has until October of 2022, if I'm understanding the conversations from the meeting correctly. So even though this resolution says no later than March 31st of 2022, it could in theory go as far on paper to October. So I just wanted to understand how the sponsor came to March, instead of just giving entire flexibility to October. That's all.
Sponsor, Mr. Volkey, if you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Briefly, I spoke with Ms. Corby. I don't have a problem if the council wants to amend this and give more time, but in speaking with her and trying to balance the two competing tasks that the Charter Revision Commission has, the maps and then the actual revision of the charter, it seemed like this was a good compromise, a good place to land. Frankly, I would have given more time, but in talking with Ms. Corby, that's kind of the compromise that we reached in where it seemed like might be enough time for the council. If this body has a desire to amend this resolution and give a longer period of time, I have no objection to that.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm still, okay, so I'm still a little confused. So whether we pass the resolution that we're discussing or not, the commission has a full 12 months to deliberate all of their, so we don't really need this resolution at all, is that? We don't need this resolution at all. They can just move beyond and say, we can't meet at the deadline, and we'll take till October to get maps done? And then my second question is, I still don't understand. If this body, if the council chooses not to act on redistricting our seven councilmanic districts, we are making a choice to move forward in the 2022 election with districts apportioned as they are currently?
Ms. Blair Klassmeyer, could you respond to, I think you're best suited to respond to Ms. Pickard's first question, and possibly the second as well?
Yeah, the second question is, that's correct. Even if the commission got you a report in time to get legislation done, you don't have to take it up. That's, this council's prerogative. I think the concern about the resolution, this particular resolution, and why it was introduced, is that when there was an appointment resolution, and the appointment resolution tasked them with completing it by a particular date. You know, I guess as a technical matter, they could come back to you and say, we can't do it. And I think that's Ms. Mansfield's point, is that the commission wants the ability to come back to you and tell you what they can and can't do. I think they could come back and tell you, we can't do it. However, I think that this resolution clarifies what the council wants as far as when and when they want it. So I think that's really the concern about why this resolution went into place. But they have a year to complete all tasks under the charter. That's correct.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
So this whole, this whole work that needs to be done is, really rests on this council. And we, as a body, need to decide if we're comfortable moving into the next election with out-of-balance districts or not. Because I've seen six or eight maps or whatever that take the simple adjustment and get this done with not a lot of fanfare. I don't, I feel like there's a movement afoot to create drama where drama doesn't exist in Anarundel County. I could be wrong. I'm just trying to understand all of the motivations that I think still, I think there's something going on, and I don't really understand it, because I think this body has the ability to get some maps done and move forward for the next 10 years and still represent our community and our constituents very well. I think we have a lot of other issues in the charter review beyond maps that are probably more important, that need a good amount of time for this Charter Review Commission to deliberate. Lots and lots of charter review that needs to happen, whether it's personnel, I mean, there's lots, we gave them a long list. And I think, I definitely think, let's get these, I think we need to get these maps done. And I don't know why we're making all this drama about it personally.
Ms. Fiedler, was your hand up for a new question, or from before?
It was. So thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, go back to a comment that was made very early in the conversation and kind of share where I am. I think it's important, Mr. Volkey, acknowledged this, that this commission can certainly come back to us by December 31st. But if they, if they get to, you know, a week or so from now and just realize, oh, we've opened a conversation that we did not anticipate, and we're not right, we're not there right now. We need more time. I just think it's important that our resolution language reflect that they have the flexibility. And for me personally, sitting here in District 5, knowing that it is unlikely that the state's collaboration will get us in line before the filing deadline, I want this commission to get it right. And there are some larger conversations happening in those meetings. I know there was a comment that the districts are currently represented well, but there was a conversation about how perhaps that's not accurate. And I was very intrigued by that conversation. I've not talked to anyone about it, but some of the map conversation with regards to the larger shift was specifically that there are some communities that don't feel represented. So I think it's important that we handle those conversations with care and give them the time that they are due. And if this commission comes back and does get it in by the end of the year, applause and accolades, because this is a huge lift, but it is important to get it right. So my question is then to Ms. Mansfield. Seeing that there were two participants at the public hearing yesterday evening, and these were individuals who have been here, or been in attendance for other meetings, would the commission like to see more community involvement? Because that's my bigger concern. Right now, families are focused on the holidays, actually celebrating in a relatively different fashion than they did last year. There's end-of-year things happening all across the business sector. I'm concerned that we're leaving out folks just by way of calendar commitments and holidays. Would you like to see more involvement from the community, I would imagine?
For, thank you. Yes, and I mean, that did come up last night. Ms. Corby did share all the newspapers and places that the commission meeting information was published. And I know, I know it's on our commission page. I know, I think you as council members are sending the information out. And I think sometimes it's just hard to get members of the public energized. And I would agree, but it is the holiday time, holiday season, which makes that a little bit harder. We did the maps that were presented last night. Those are now up on the website, so individuals can have a chance to take a look. So I guess we are wondering, with tomorrow, with Thursday night, I'm sorry, Thursday being a virtual meeting, whether that means we would have more individuals, so they won't need to drive to Annapolis and sit in the council chamber. Maybe we'll hear some broader input from them. But yes, I mean, I think there was discussion about, you know, larger public input on the maps. Because I would just add, in terms of the individuals that attended last night, there were two, as I said, and they have, they sat through, they sat through every minute with us so far. And I think from those two individuals, one was, I think he was expressing agreement in some ways about feeling like districts are not accurately representing constituents in Anarundel County, but I think he would more, he was more pushing, though, charter amendment changes to do proportional representation and actually getting the maps done. So at least those jurisdictions that do have, that are outside of the standard deviation, those issues would be addressed. And I think the other individual was focusing on the same issue. But generally, I would say, yeah, I think all of us on the commission feel, you know, public input is important in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do think this resolution is necessary, and the reason is, if you've had an opportunity, as some of you have indicated you have, to watch the Charter Revision Commission meetings, a number of members on the commission have talked about how they need to get things done. There's a deadline from the council. They'd like to get this wrapped up in the time the council asks for it. So it's my understanding, just listening to the words that people are saying in these meetings and their comments, nothing beyond what's on the public record, that there is a strong sense from the commission members, the council's given them a charge, meet the charge. Don't fall down on the job, meet the charge. And so the purpose of this resolution is to say to them, hey, we're changing the charge a little bit. We're giving you a little more time. We ask you to do the unreasonable. This is a lot to get done in a very short period of time. Historically, this has never been done in this short of a period of time. So with that, that's the intention of the resolution. Now, if the Charter Revision Commission says, we don't care, we don't need more time, we're okay, off we go. We can get this done by 12:31. More power to them. They can certainly do that. But I have concerns about this process that I will raise if and when we get a map about the level of public input, considering that this has been done through the holiday season with very little in terms of reply. And if you've watched surrounding jurisdictions, our counterparts in Baltimore County are actually having significant discussions about what the maps should look like up in Baltimore County. They've had it there. There are other counties that have had these same types of issues. I would not be shocked to see the same kind of thing come to Anarundel County. So getting more input on the front end may benefit us in the long run. I know that that's something that many people in this council often advocate for, is more input in the front as we put together the process before we get to the point where we're having a public hearing. So that's what we're talking about doing. But, you know, if the council says this isn't necessary, then we will take a vote, you know, and that's just how it's going to go. But I would remind all my colleagues, it does take five votes to pass a map. So unlike many things on this council that are four votes that are majority rule, it does take a supermajority to pass a map.
I'm going to jump in quickly for a question, and this, I'm hoping that, this might be a question from Madam Secretary, a request for information that you may be able to help us with. Do we have any, or are we able to get information about how many people have participated in, you know, in the conversation about map redistricting in the past? Like, is there a way to get numbers of how many people have testified or submitted comments on previous? Obviously, the most recent data is already, you know, what, seven or eight years old? But, you know, anything comparison would, I think, maybe be helpful. Is this a huge topic of public interest, or is this, you know, one where the trust is put in the council?
Madam Chair, some of this information may be available already. The interim report, final report, that were done in 2011 on redistricting, as well as the final report that was done on charter revisions, are all posted on the council website, actually on the Charter Revision Commission webpage. And those reports include all the minutes. Those minutes are really helpful in painting the picture of how this played out in 2011, and they do include summaries of testimony that was given at public hearings. So I'm happy to pull more of the details and share those with the council, but just in case you are interested in seeing the full product, that is, they are posted online.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we're here talking about process, which, like definitions for Mr. Volkey, process is one of my favorite things to talk about, and I'm sure, Mr. Volkey, you're not going to like any map that you view as overly partisan. So luckily, we'll probably get five, because this council's always done that, and we'll figure out a way. The question is how. And the thing that I think got a bit muddied in what you just said, and I think everybody needs to understand, is that the Charter Revision Commission is a commission we appointed. We each chose a person to be our, essentially, our designee on this commission to look at specific issues, because we can't form our own committees, except where we have such special direction to do so, like once every 10 years for this committee. So the fact that, you know, their work is being done during the holiday season, and that they may not have been able to have very many people at public hearings, doesn't bother me, because we appointed the commission so that we could hear from the commission. And when we introduce a bill on the first meeting of January, that bill is going to have a public hearing. Just like all our other bills, we're going to have plenty to be heard from the public at that time. But that's not why we are relying on the commission. And I don't think that's the purpose of the commission, so it doesn't delegitimize the commission's work if people are not showing up during this busy holiday time. In January, I'm sure everyone will be paying attention.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm still trying, still trying to understand. I've only had one cup of coffee. So the sponsor is still feeling very comfortable moving through the 2022 election without reapportioning our districts for population growth. That's what I'm hearing. That's what is being advocated for. That's fine. That's your thought. But I just want to, having reviewed some of the notes of previous commissions, the council received 10 maps. The commission convened in April, and by July, the council was given 10 maps back in 2011. So I think the commission is narrowing down on three or so maps for us to then pick up the mantle and get this done, like our state counterparts, who are in overdrive trying to get state districts done in a very tight deadline as well. I think we can do this. But if we want to move, if the majority of this council wants to move forward into 2022 without reapportioning districts, I mean, maybe it's not a big deal. Like you said, in 2018, they were a little out of whack due to population growth. Maybe it's not a big deal. Maybe we shouldn't kill ourselves to get this done. But I'm still, I'm still not sure that that's really what's happening here.
Ms. Mansfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't have any comments on that topic, but I do need to get off now. I have another meeting at 10:30. I need to jump into that Zoom room now. But I want to thank all of you for your time this morning. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. And obviously, Ms. Corby will be involved Thursday night at our public meeting. I'm sure we can report, I'm sure she could report back to you to let you know how that went and kind of where we're sitting at that point in time. But thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Corby, for all your help as well.
And thank you, Ms. Mansfield, and send our thanks to all of the commission members when you see them on Thursday, please.
Great, thank you. You too. Bye-bye.
All right. I believe Mr. Volkey was next, and I would just ask that if we can, let's try and wrap up this conversation, because we do have a significant number of other items on our agenda today.
Agreed. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I would just point out that I don't believe it's a fair characterization that Councilwoman Pickard said that I'm just sitting here saying I'm comfortable moving through the next election with the districts out of proportion. I think that's a mischaracterization. I think that's a mischaracterization. That is not what this resolution says. Um, if Councilwoman Pickard desires to view it that way, she's certainly entitled to her prerogative. But I think in debate, it's typically appropriate that if something like that comes up, particularly a statement like that, it's appropriate to allow the person. That that has been leveled against to respond immediately, uh, which is why I put my hand up. With respect to what happens and what has happened historically in this council, I would just note that the twenty fourteen election, even the maps that were passed then. Were not perfectly proportional, considering the census was done in twenty ten. The maps in twenty eighteen, again, were not perfectly proportional because the census is done in twenty ten. The maps that now will be passed by this council again are in the same predicament. I mean, this is just the reality of. The mapping time from the Census Bureau, when they do the census, the time that we then do our maps, the time when the elections work. It's just not a perfect process. And so we have to do the best we can. But it's not an atypical situation. To see council members running in districts that are slightly out of proportion. Certainly, the maps at this point are more out of proportion than any of us would like to see them. And we need to address that at some point. But I also think that this idea of somehow we're gonna fix this problem immediately because this has never happened before. It just is a misunderstanding of the history and how this process works. So I wanted to clear that up. Certainly happy to move on. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Seidler.
Uh, thank you. I, I lowered my hand. I think Mr. Volkey covered everything I was going to follow up with.
All right, thank you. Then if there, um, aren't any further pressing, obviously, this conversation will continue. Um, I would like to move forward onto Bill number ninety-nine dash twenty-one. And Mr. Volkey, this is your bill.
Yet again, thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So Bill ninety-nine twenty-one, uh, was heard at a public hearing at our last meeting. I requested that the bill be held. So we had an opportunity to talk about it this work session. I appreciate my colleagues' courtesy in that regard. The bill comes out of a situation that I had in my district. Where a small business owner approached me and wanted to put on a very small addition to the back of her business. Um, it was an unfinished space that was simply going to be used for storage. And ultimately, when she looked at the process and she talked to some of the engineers on what needed to happen. The costs were so overwhelming for her to go through the process of a site development plan. That she decided, forget this, I might as well just keep putting up these little storage sheds behind my, my, you know, building at this point. Um, because that's a less expensive way to move forward with this, to just get the permits. Or even now that the council has said ten by fifteen sheds are acceptable for no permit, you can just stack a bunch of them on your property. The reality of what that does is it incentivizes something that then creates an eyesore. And I don't think that that's what we wanna be doing for our constituents. I also don't think this is the way that we wanna be treating small business owners. I do expect that I will have some amendments to this bill that are going to be coming, uh, based on feedback that I've received from constituents. As well as other stakeholders. However, that's the intention of this bill is to address a situation that came out of my district with a small business that needed a little help. And wanted to put on a, uh, a relatively small addition to their property. I have had a chance to work with the Office of Planning and Zoning on this. I appreciate their feedback as we put this bill together. Um, I know that we did not do everything they wanted us to do, uh, but I think we did a number of things that they wanted us to do. So I know there may still be concerns. And I'm happy to hear them. Uh, but ultimately, this is where we wound up on the bill. So with that, look forward to hearing people's comments.
All right, um, Admin. Mr. Barron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Uh, got the whole team here. We have, uh, our Deputy C A O for land use. Ms. Lori Rhodes, uh, Mr. Stephen Kai-Ziegler, uh, Ms. Lynn Miller, uh, Mr. Wiedermeier from, uh, IMP. And Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. Appreciate, um, Councilman Volkey holding this bill. At, at the last meeting, I think it, it gives us a chance to, to, um, dive into some of the concerns. I'm actually gonna ask Ms. Miller, uh, and maybe Mr. Steve Kai-Ziegler, if, if he has anything to add to, to what Ms. Miller has to say. Sort of talk through a couple of the ideas, uh, that the administration is working on in terms of an amendment. Or, or amendments for this bill. Um, hopefully, uh, we can get there because we do agree. Uh, with, with the sponsor that, that sometimes we need to look at, um, uh, reforming our red tape. So, Ms. Miller, take it away.
Thank you, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Um, we did, um, spend a lot of time working with, uh, the sponsor and Ms. Schuet. On, uh, a number of different versions of this bill. And we appreciate their, um, seeking out our opinion and working with us on it. I think, uh, the, the bill is very close to, um, something that would be very comfortable with. Um, the, uh, outstanding item that I believe we would like to, we'll, we'll be discussing an amendment related to would be. Um, the process through which, um, these minor improvements are allowed to skip. Um, preliminary or, uh, site development plan. Um, currently, that is done through, uh, the process we call a modification. Um, there's an application form that gets logged into our system and that allows us to, um. Take several, uh, take several steps to ensure that we're gonna be comfortable allowing this applicant to skip those processes. Um, and it also gives us an avenue to seek input and comments from other supporting divisions or agencies within the county. And, um, so we would like, uh, this piece of legislation to reference that process. So that it's clear to all that that is the mechanism, I guess, that we would use, uh, to make a, a decision. Um, without that, um, we, I think we would be in the position of having to create a new. Uh, what we would call an intake process, a new application and review process. And that, that can actually be something that takes a fair amount of legwork between OPC and IMP. Um, so our preference would be not to have to do that, but just to be able to use the current modification process, which is what is used now. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
That, Madam Chair, just if I can, um, add, uh, Councilman Volkey. Um, if you don't have, uh, all of what, um, Ms. Miller put, uh, in, uh, just spoke about in writing. We will, we will put something together for you, uh, before the week is out to make sure you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Uh, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Barron, appreciate that. Thank you very much. And Ms. Miller, thank you for your comments and the time that OPC has spent looking at this legislation. I will share with you my concern with calling it a modification is, um. And, and I don't say this to be nasty, so please don't take it that way. But there's been a lot of talk in this county about modifications and percentages of modifications granted or denied and how that works. So my one concern with this bill is that if we called this process a modification, it would wind up getting lumped into that same issue. Where now, all of a sudden, there was a bit of an incentive for OPC to say, well, we don't wanna grant modifications. Because then that's sort of the public writ large understands modifications. And many people have a very negative view on modification. So as a result, there's been talk of, you know, this percentage of modifications were granted at this time, and now that's changed and we're not granting as many. So I just worried that a good intention in this bill would get swept up in sort of a larger messaging issue. So if OPC has a way to handle that, or you all have some suggestions, that was my concern with using the, the idea or the words modification. Uh, because I didn't wanna see the, the baby thrown out with the bathwater, if that makes sense.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, go ahead. I see some of your, um, colleagues from Admin.
Yeah, and, and I'll, and I'll throw it to, to Mr. Kai-Ziegler and Ms. Miller, and, and, cause I just do wanna kind of echo Councilman Volkey's comment. I had that, that same concern, uh, and all, and I think I'll let the professionals speak to it. The problem we have is we need a process here, uh, to go through. And the process we have is. Modifications. And, and maybe it does have a branding problem. Uh, we'd be open i- if there is a way. But unfortunately, and I'll let the professionals speak now, I think that's what we got.
Yeah, Steve Kai-Ziegler, uh, Planning and Zoning Officer. Mr. Barron's correct. The, the biggest issue is. The modification process is actually the only viable intake process we have to be able to deal with these. Otherwise, we would have to be asking an applicant basically to give us all the information required in the site development plan. To make a decision that they don't need to do a site development plan, which is, which is silly. And, and as you know, we had crafted the green notice, um, you know. A while ago to try and help the same people that now were working on legislation. So. I think modification is probably the only way to do this unless we were willing to delay. Because creating a new intake process while we're initiating the, uh, installation of, of Loon is very, very difficult. But what I would say, it's a very good point, Mr. Volkey. On, let's say, the, um, the view that people have on modifications and perhaps the view that I had on modifications when I started my employment here. It's a far more dynamic thing than probably the vast majority of people know. And what we've been able to do is we capture all the modifications, all the decisions that are made. And now we're categorizing what types of modifications we're granting, whether it's an administrative procedure. Whether it's an environmental request, whether it's a request to forego, um, a site development plan. If we, um, if we move forward with this through the modification process, what I can tell you is we'll simply create another category. Which is modifications to site development plans. And we would be very easy to pull those out. They meet the criteria. They, they get the mod. They move on with their business. And, you know, in a period of time, I could tell you, as an example, in a year. We had fifteen modification requests for that. They were all granted because they met the criteria. And we'd be able to pull that out of the, if you wanna say, mass of. Modification decisions that are made. So I think, I think we can solve that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Kai-Ziegler. Um, I'm gonna let, um, Ms. Miller and then Ms. Schuet chime in as well. And Ms. Pickard, I promise I, I'm coming to you.
Um, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Thank you. Actually, Mr. Kai-Ziegler covered much of what I was gonna say. Uh, we do understand Mr. Volkey's concerns, um, that the modification request might, uh, might not always be granted. Um, we did pull some stats from, uh, FY twenty twenty and twenty-one and up to date through twenty-two. Um, looking at modification requests that we're seeking to skip either preliminary plan, sketch plan, or site development plan. And of those, at least seventy-five percent were granted. So it is, um, it is common for our office to be able to grant those modifications. When the criteria that we're looking for are met. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Schuet.
Lynn Schuet, Legislative Council. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm trying to understand, I think there are other places in the code that refer to, for example, sending a site development plan to reviewing agencies. And I, and I'm, so I'm a little confused about why you can't do that as well here, as you do with the site development plan. And I think it's also applicable in subdivision. What is the process when you, when the site development plan, for example, goes to all reviewing agencies? Don't you just send it to them and ask them to come back and give you comments?
So I'll start. Steve Kai-Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. But I'll ask, uh, um, Mark in IMP to weigh in. Keep in mind, in planning and zoning, we don't do intake for development applications. They come in through inspections and permits. There is, uh, an organized process that they follow. They have, if you wanna say, a, um. Uh, a, a, a software system, an automated system that has a certain number of categories that they can use to move different types of applications. Wherever they need to go, depending on the type. What we're doing here is if we create a new application process. We don't have an ability to send it where it needs to go. We do because we, with a site development plan, because it's an established process. And that's why we, you know, we're working with the best tool available, which is the modification. But, um, Mr. Wiedermeier could perhaps explain what happens when, like, a site development plan comes in to his shop. For distribution to all of the reviewing agencies.
So I don't wanna confuse things, Steve. So the site development plan application act actually does come in through IMP and is forwarded to OPC for distribution. The building permit, when a building permit application comes in, that is then entered into our building permit review. System PIPs and then is distributed for review. Um, that way, in packages, go out to all the various review agencies. So kind of two separate tasks. You following that?
So part of this would be if a site development plan came in through IMP, it's given to us to distribute where it goes. We're talking about a new process here. And we don't have a mechanism to deal with it from an intake system without creating something new. Which is, Mark, I think you would agree, would be very difficult for us to do at this stage. And that's why we're proposing, proposing to use the modification process. Because that's what we're using now to deal with these same requests.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just know from, from when we held this bill, there were, I believe, three amendments already proposed. And just checking the conversation from the hallway of, we were all leaving that meeting. I was under the impression that there were more amendments coming. I just wanted to understand if that was really the case. And if so, would, would they be shared with us in advance of, of December twentieth? Thank you.
And, uh, I'm, Mr. Volkey, yes, go ahead.
Sure, certainly. If, if I have additional amendments, they will be shared, yes.
And Pete Barron with the administration, I can, uh, make that commitment for us as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I see Ms. Schuet.
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't mean to belabor this, but I'm not really understanding. If the site development plan initially comes into IMP. And then it's sent to Planning and Zoning for distribution to reviewing agencies, then how do you do that? There must be a mechanism to do that. Cause that's what the, the law has been since these, this code was adopted, I think, in two thousand and five. I just don't understand. Maybe we can talk about it offline. I don't wanna take up a lot of time on it, but I don't understand.
Mr. Kai-Ziegler, if you'd like to respond, go ahead.
Sure. Um, Ms. Schuet, we can take a site development plan in through IMP and we can distribute it. But we're talking about something that, in theory, won't be a site development plan.
Can't you use the same process, though?
I'm not sure I know how to, I'm not sure if Ms., uh, Ms. Miller or Mr. Wiedermeier could help. The problem is that we don't have a term for this, any way to process it. We're, we're really not trying to be difficult. But if someone tried to come into the permit office. And apply for a site plan not required, um, Mr. Wiedermeier, how would you deal with that?
Um, go ahead, Mr. Wiedermeier. I see Ms. Miller willing to chime in as well.
I'll jump in real quick, Mark Wiedermeier, IMP. So typically, what we would see is an applicant normally come in with a building permit application. And see that they would require a site development plan under current situations. And refer them to go through the site development plan process or the modification process. If they were proposing to add the square footage that's, um, noted within the, uh, subject bill. At that time, then they would apply for the modification or site development plan process. So we don't, what, what this bill does is kind of skip, from what I see. A, a process in order to make the determination that they meet the requirements that are outlined here.
Through the modification process.
Correct.
Other, otherwise, the site development plan comes into our office, we disseminate it out to seventeen agencies. And everyone begins reviewing the project for a site development plan. That's why we need them to come in as the modification.
Ms. Miller, did you wanna add something as well?
Sure, I, I, um, possibly this will help Ms. Schuet, I'm not sure. But, um, it's not just a matter of us sending out copies of applications to reviewing agencies. We have to have, um, a tracking system. So when we talk about an intake system. When any kind of application comes in that has an established process, we are entering all kinds of data into specific fields. In various different databases that collectively make up our tracking system. And that's what we use. To field information out to different agencies. We can log in when we get their comments back, what their comments are. It's really about being able to track this through the process. So we already have a tracking process set up for modifications. We have one for site development plans, preliminary plans, et cetera. If we don't use one of those existing processes that we already have, then we would have to create a new one. So that, that's what we're talking about when, when we're talking about a need for a process. And setting up a new intake and, and tracking process, while that might sound to outsiders like that's a simple thing. And what's the big deal? It actually, and I won't go into the details of why, a lot of it has to do with our very old and outdated. Databases that we're working to upgrade. Um, but it, it's. But it it's a lot of legwork for OPC and I I IMP, and actually, we have to get OIT involved. To set up a new intake and tracking process, and that is what we're hoping to avoid, especially since we are in the process of working with an outside consultant to. Develop a much more modern and efficient land use development tracking system. So hopefully, that might help. I'm not sure.
Uh, thank you very much for that information. Mr. Kai Ziegler, was that Ziegler, was that your hand up from before? Or do you have additional?
No, thank you. I'm I'm sorry. I keep leaving it up. My apologies. It's coming down.
No worries. All right. If there aren't any additional questions, I'd like to move forward to bill number one oh five dash twenty one, and thank you. For everyone from the admin for commenting and chiming in on that on that bill. Um, so this is an admin bill. So, Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Uh, thanks, Baron. I'm gonna bring back Ms. Podolski and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer for this one. Um, this bill, i- it's a little, it's it's a little funny that we have to do this bill. But currently, uh, there is a strange dynamic, I guess you could call it, on the number of bargaining units. That are permitted in the county. Um, and what we have happening is every time a. A a group of employees makes the decision, hey, we want to merge with another unit. We are, that number trickles down. So while the the code says thirteen, as um. As bargaining units, as they will merge or or unify, that that lowers the number. Well, unfortunately, um, if a new group, an unrepresented group decides, hey. Uh, we want to have a voice on the job and and have a a representative and and form a union. Um, on the way our code's written, uh, we would not be allowed to create that new bargaining unit. Um, and that's just patently unfair. And so what this bill does is it increases. Uh, the the number of bargaining units that's allowed. Um, because we have a group that has filed the paperwork. Uh, to be organized by the Teamsters Union for Police Communications Operators Three and Four. So what this bill will do is permit twelve bargaining units, which would. Be the current eleven and this one and removes this um. Statutory constriction is what I'm gonna call it. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baron.
I think I coined a new term.
Works for me. All right, seeing no questions on this one, um, let's move forward to one oh six dash twenty one, bill one oh six dash twenty one. And again, this is an admin bill.
Yep, happy to to jump in on this one. Pete Baron with the administration. Um, I have Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Deputy CAO for land use, and Matt Johnston, our Environmental Policy Director. Um, as we're all getting quite used to him in this meeting, Mr. Steve Kai Ziegler and Ms. Lynn Miller will be hanging around. Uh, we also have Kelly Crennits, uh, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Um, so as you all recall, we did a couple of uh farm alcohol bills in in previous um. Uh, sessions. There was a bill sixty-eight twenty, which eliminated winery wineries in the code. And established a new use entitled farm alcohol production. Um, now, what happened when we did this is when we changed the the rules. We actually left off an existing winery as the ability in their zone to operate. So they it impedes them, they would have to be a nonconforming use. This fixes that issue. Um, and we have the experts here if you have any questions on the specifics of this.
I'm on mute. Councilwoman here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. I had a constituent ask me this, so I just wanted to ask. I don't know if maybe Mr. Kai Ziegler, someone from your team is the most appropriate to answer this, but. How many farm alcohol production facilities do we currently have in RARLD and R1?
Steve Kaisigler, planning and zoning officer. I I won't have that information. I don't know that Lynn Miller or Kelly Crennits would either, but I'll ask.
Okay, perfect. If we could just find that out. Thank you.
I don't have it. We'd have to look into that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, we're picking up the pace a little bit. Oh, Ms. Harris, that a follow-up?
Yes, I just have one other question. Um, thank you. Mr. Baron, I'm not sure I quite understand. When we converted the definition from wineries and breweries, et cetera, to just farm alcohol production. How did we leave what? I'm not sure I understand what you mean. We left out an existing winery.
So we left out the underlying zoning that a existing winery exists in from the um. From the permitted use for farm alcohol production. Uh, so it was not extended into the RCA.
Got it. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Crennits probably can answer that clearer.
I just can add that there is a a list in the code of specific uses for RCA. So it was left off because, as you guys know from other bills, anything that changes anything in the critical area has to go before the critical area commission. So that's a little bit more time consuming. So there was, you know, it was left off with the understanding we'd come back and do that later. So it's it's a specific list that has to be changed so that it can include the definite, the new definition and the new term.
Thank you. And it appears that Ms. Harris possibly has one more follow-up question.
Yes, one more. Thank you. I'll be quick. And I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I just want to understand what um. What else might this open up? If if it's just one winery, Councilwoman Pickard talked earlier about kind of how do we help this one person out? Is is this planning and zoning's thought process on the best way to help out this particular winery? Or are there other options that we might have to make sure that this winery has helped out without necessarily impacting a whole zone or things like that?
Um, Pete Baron with the administration. I'll I'll defer to Ms. Rhodes on on sort of the bigger fundamental questions. But we we thought that, you know, this is this is pretty targeted. Um, oh, Ms. Rhodes, please feel free.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Prior to the farm alcohol production bill, we were listing. Our agricultural alcohol production uses separately. We had wineries, breweries. And what we wanted to do was to combine all agricultural farm alcohol production under one category. When we did that for the zoning districts, we omitted fixing that in the RCA critical area. Which allow a winery. So in essence, when that change occurred, it rendered that existing winery as nonconforming. So in order for that use to to add additions or get permits, they would have to register it as a nonconforming use. What this bill will do is bring farm alcohol production in line with how we allowed in the zoning districts in the RCA. What the RCA regulations will do is limit the scope and size of that use based on those more restrictive critical area regulations. So it doesn't really change anything. It just brings everything in line with the intent of that farm alcohol production bill.
Okay, so wineries were previously allowed. We just missed. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
And this has been discussed with the Critical Area Commission, and they feel that this use as defined in our code is consistent with. The scope of of uses in RCA.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That was very helpful. Um, all right, moving on to bill one oh seven dash twenty one. And once again, this is an admin bill. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, hopefully, Ms. McAllister from Budget is able to join us. I know she was in a meeting. Um, we're starting to see some admin folks have to drop off for other issues, but we'll see if she's able to join. Uh, I also have Chris Murphy and Beth O'Connell from DPW and Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Uh, glad to see you, Naomi. Thanks for uh hopping in. Um, so one oh seven makes supplementary appropriations totaling. Uh, one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand dollars for two capital projects. Uh, they're a result of higher than anticipated award from the State Water Energy Infrastructure Program Grants administered through MDE. The grant funds will be used in place of water and wastewater bonds. Um, our experts here are are able to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here to answer the questions. It appears that we have none right now. So, um, thank you, and we'll we'll be in touch if we've got things we need to ask. So, um, moving on to bill one oh eight dash twenty one, and this is actually my bill. Um, so I will give myself the floor here for one oh eight dash twenty one. So this is a um. A sort of creative way to look at one of the issues that we identified earlier in our term. Um, and that is the alarming number of suicides by um. By gun. And as you may realize and may be obvious without saying, um, using firearms for suicide is is highly fatal. Um, other methods of suicide, you know, you may be able to have someone who can overdie dose and, you know, be rushed to the hospital and actually can recover. But in the largest number of situations, firearm suicides are fatal. And so what this what this bill does is basically asks the Department of Health. To create some resources. And actually, we started out with um, uh, gun gun death by suicide as the as the starting point. But then, as we looked at this, we realized there's lots of other kind of information that could be helpful. Um, from a public safety standpoint, um, from, well, I guess, and a and a health standpoint with respect to firearms. And so this asks the Health Department to create materials, um, to basically give resources to anyone who purchases a purchases a firearm in the county or purchases ammunition in the county. To immediately put resources in their hands. So it literally goes into their hand when they make the purchase of things like. Um, the National Suicide Hotline, um, information about handgun safety training programs in the in the county. Um, information about using the appropriate storage facilities for, um. You know, for handguns. So for, well, actually, any kinds of guns. So this is, you know, this is sort of a a unique approach. But it does address an identified problem. Um, it's extremely low cost, and I I hope you will consider passing this bill. And I guess, Admin, you will have the floor now.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, Dr. Colleen Naaman had to to jump off for another meeting, so you're you're stuck with just me. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Um, I want to thank the sponsor for her work on this important initiative. Uh, we we had a couple of meetings with the experts from from health. Uh, and and I think what we have here is is a a good bill that we can definitely implement. And hopefully, we'll do some good. Uh, as as I'm not gonna repeat the stuff the sponsor noted. Um, and and we'll just say that, um, anything that that helps will. Uh, be worth it. Um, the the health folks have a ton of statistics about. Um, the impact of of guns, particularly around suicide and and accidental. Uh, that that this kind of education is is needed for. So with that, we support this bill and and look forward to putting it in place.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Biedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I did discuss this bill with those businesses that would be impacted, and in overall, there wasn't too much concern. But the question that I did get repeatedly is what would happen if the establishments. Made every effort to distribute the literature at the point of sale, but the purchaser rejects it and will not accept it? Would that put them in potential of violation? How would that work?
Uh, this is Pete Baron. I'll let Office of Law answer that.
Hi, Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Um, I think that that's all that's required is the effort be made. You can't force somebody to take something, so making it available and having it available, I think, is sufficient.
The language in the bill is visible and available.
Although we do, oh, well, I'm gonna jump in since I'm chair and it's my bill. Um, we we do ask the 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 retailers to to actually distribute the material. So as long as they're making an attempt to actually distribute the material, um, I think that would meet the requirements of the bill. Um, I just want to add to that, one of the things that I learned as I was researching this bill and researching the the connection between um. Suicide and death by gun suicide is that in the first month. Um, after purchasing a weapon, the risk of death by suicide increases one hundredfold. So it really is an enormous risk. Um, obviously, you know, you you have people that are purchasing a weapon specifically with the intent to commit suicide by gun. And so if you immediately put the resources in their hands to get them help, um, you certainly can't hurt them. And with that, I will call on my colleague, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a innovative prevention technique that comes out of the gun prevention. Task force, you know, just the what we learned about gun deaths in the county. Um, I would just say, um, maybe our folks that, um, at point of sale can. Use a tactic like the CVS and attach your receipt to your prescription, and you can't, you you walk out the door with it. Um, I think, uh, the the question from my colleague was certainly appropriate. Um, I understand. Folks want to be in compliance, so it sounds like this bill is ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this for a second. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I did have a question. And it's probably for you, Madam Chair, but how is it that you decided that the Class C civil offense was the right level for the violation amount? Um, as compared to one of the other levels? What was the consideration there? And what what's your thought on what that level needs to be to ensure compliance, I guess?
Basically, we felt that was enough, that was the right level to, um, you know, encourage compliance. And if we found an instance of noncompliance, it would, again, further compliance. So it was really just sort of calculated to encourage compliance. All right, well, if there are not any further questions, I look forward, I I hope to get my colleagues' support on this bill. And we will move to bill number one oh nine dash twenty one. And Councilman Pruski, this is Dorbel. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think the first thing I'd like to do with this bill is to give a little bit of history and and genesis, because I think it's important to understand why. Uh, it was introduced. Um, it was actually an Anarom County police officer that came up to me and suggested the bill. Uh, and it relates to something, if you're not familiar, called smash and grab. Where essentially, a criminal will take a vehicle or object and trying to break into a gun store, take those weapons. And obviously, sell them or use them in a criminal manner. Um, and again, I wanted to kind of put that out there that that this was the genesis of that bill, and it actually has happened. In Anarondo. I'm not going to mention the business or businesses that that it's impacted, but it's a part of the public record. Um, I also wanted to state that, uh, before I read the bill, uh, this bill was sent via mail. Uh, to all gun stores and punch punch shops in Anarondo County that sell weapons. Uh, a draft of the bill, I asked them for feedback. And I will discuss the one or two responses that I got. A draft of the bill, I asked them for feedback, and I will discuss the one or two responses that I got back. So again, for someone to say that they didn't know about the bill, they didn't know it was there. Also, when I had my Odenton Town Hall, I had several folks who discussed the bill also in public. So there's been, this has been going on for months in terms of discussion, and I, I want to first thank the Law Office. I want to thank Ms. Schewitt, obviously, because we've had several meetings, not just a few. The Anaronda County Police Department, Pete Barron and the Administration, I could go through everybody, of course. Lori Blair Klausmeyer and, and the other groups that kind of, kind of got in. I know I'm missing probably inspection permits, planning and zoning, there's a list of people, but regardless, there's a lot of work and time that went into this bill. And to be clear, there is a Baltimore County bill that we utilize as kind of a model. So there is something that was both legally tested and proven, there's some, some changes, but let me get into it. So first of all, I, I think we need to be clear that this is a public safety bill of security measures for the sale of firearms. Does not limit anyone from buying firearms. It does not stop anybody from buying firearms. There's state law that's on the books that we certainly have to follow. Really, the true intent of the bill is the safety at gun stores and gun shows. The reason why gun shows is also included in this is that while there are not many, or that I'm even aware of, we have no, really, anything in our code, no restrictions, conditions, or information in regards to gun shows, and this, this certainly looks at that. But I think there needs to be a uniform set of standards to determine, deter criminals from obviously breaking in and stealing firearms from wherever that may be, whether it's at a gun store, gun show. Obviously, you want to keep them away from folks who would utilize them in a criminal manner. And in addition, I think was important here, especially for that smash and grab that occurred in Anaronda County, even if you have basic security at your store, the response time for police to get there by the time that, you know, these, these things are stolen, it, it's just not enough time. So obviously, there has to be enough deterrents that, that you could try and catch who it is and figure out what was stolen in there. So again, I want to make sure that that's there, but this is really about safety requirements, making sure the, the, the police are aware of security measures in place. And if you look recently, and this is just whether you read the Baltimore Sun, Washington Post, I could go through any paper, the amount of smash and grab robberies that are occurring. It's easy to occur, you drive a vehicle through a location that sells guns and weapons, they basically grab them and resell it on the street and use in crime. And this has been on the uptick. The bill highlights in terms of the requirements, it is asking to submit, registrate, or excuse me, certification, not registration. There's a big difference, right? You're not paying the county to do this, they're simply asking the Police Department to review their security plans, and what do security plans require? Obviously, the things that prevent smash and grab and other things such as exterior barriers, bollards, concrete planters, gates, grills, audio, visual security systems, the firearms to be secure. Because what happens in smash and grab is you have in a case in your store, if somebody runs in, they take them and they're gone. There's really no prevention of trying to, to get that. And what would happen is the Police Department would sign off on this plan. One of the things I think it was important to notice, and I don't know if you've ever, I think on a few bills we've heard this, we have a Community Relations Department and also a Safety Department that actually meets with businesses frequently in our Police Department to go over security measures. They do this on a regular basis. We have people who have shopping malls, other things, they ask to come out. I know Captain Goodwin, or excuse me, Major Goodwin, when she was Western District Commander, did that with folks, and obviously, that continues to occur. So I think that's important to note, it's something we're kind of already doing from that. As far as gun shows, again, we do not have any regulations, but if we were to have them, there's approval from the Police Department for a security plan, which I think makes sense. And also, to have that audio/video coverage from that. But in general, we want to make sure that if we are selling or transporting weapons for sale, that we have the manufacturer model and serial numbers. How do you catch if it's used in a crime? You know, obviously, what's used. And so that's important to obviously have those factors in that place. Want to highlight again, this is not punitive, this is not meant to prevent gun sales. There's no county fee for the sign-off. This is simply asking our police to provide a resource and go through those. And then, of course, the, the public, the place a public assembly requirement is state law. So I know a lot of people have questions about that, that why did you list it that way? In terms of the square footage or where it's located, that is state law, that's a requirement, and certainly, others can, can back that up. And then also, there are some measures where the Police Department, in working with them, you could have a security guard at the store of things in regards to making sure that those, those items are moved to a secure location. There's a, there's a wide range of things that can be done, and obviously, that's security measures. So here, here's the question that comes up, and, and one of the respondees to the bill said, well, what about the cost to the business? So what I did is I actually called my insurance agent, and I called two others in Anaronda County, and I asked them, I said, how is insurance determined on a commercial business that sells guns? Well, similar to your home, they look at, for instance, how far are you from a fire station, how far are you from a police station? Do you have a security system? What measures do you have in place in terms of gates, other things? It's really a, a measurement in points, of course, there's not a unique system because every insurance company is different, right? They insure the amount, liability, everything's there. But the question that, that was brought up is that if you invest in some of these security measures, your insurance actually will go down because the risk is lower. And in addition, it might take some time to do that. But when I did look at this, I made sure that was one of the things that were there. In addition, there are stores that already meet the requirements. When I talked with the Police Department and many of the systems that are already there, they already have many of the things that prevent smash and grab and limit, obviously, access to these guns. So again, I think this bill is, is well thought out. I understand the argument that there's always a cost for security measures, there's time, other things. You are not paying a fee to do this, but I think this is something that makes sense. And also, in regards to the gun shows, having zero regulations is a problem. I think we really have to have it. I'm not saying that we will have it, we don't have it, I don't know, right? That, that somebody has that, but having those measures in place certainly makes sense. So again, I want to thank all the stakeholders that took the time. Baltimore County had a great debate on this, you can certainly look it up. Other counties are suggesting the same. And I believe that this is a reasonable piece, and glad that I was able to, to get the bill out there ahead of time to get some feedback and obviously talk with folks. But I'll leave it there, and thank you again.
Thank you for that very, you know, informative background, Mr. Pruski. Or do any of my colleagues have questions? I'm not sure who was first, so I'm going to go with Ms. Beedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I do have a, a few questions to ask here. I'll start with the first in the bill. So when it, Section 126103, the Police Department Approval of Security Measures, I think the concern that I heard consistently is that what happens in the circumstance that a business has submitted their security measures for review, but the Police Department has not been out yet, and then they have to close for one or more days waiting for approval? Is there a way to time this so that that doesn't happen? How is it, just trying to understand what the impacts could be for closures?
I'm not sure. Mr. Pruski, if you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to let the Administration and Police Department do that because they're the ones handling it. But my understanding is that the reviews that they do now are very timely. I don't see that happening, but again, I can't speak for the Police Department, they're the ones who are doing the reviews. And again, they have a unit that kind of handles that, so I'll leave that up to the Admin or if anyone else wants to chime in. But I, I don't think that, that would be an issue, you know, from that, because even the ones that have requested, that aren't even a part of this bill, they usually have that unit respond very quickly, so I, I don't see that happening. Plus, I don't have the list in front of me, but there, there was, it wasn't like there was 150 gun shops and pawn shops. I think it was 20, 25, the range that, that we sent letters out to that, that actually are in this, so it's, it's a reasonable number.
Pete Barron with the Administration. I'll just introduce Captain Arbuthnot from our Police Department, and Lori Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with us from, from the Office of Law. To echo Councilman Pruski's comments, I don't think we're, we're very concerned about that actually being an issue, but I'll let the Captain speak to it. Sir?
Good morning. Yes, I, I, from our perspective, I feel like we would, we would do it on a, on an annual basis. We would, if these businesses were already open, so we would get these inspections done. If there were any issues, they would have time, if they weren't in compliance, to come into compliance. And then any new business that will be opening, before they would actually probably get their permits and open the doors, they would have to comply with these security measures. So I don't really expect that it would cause any problems unless a business were refused to comply, and then that's a whole different situation, but I, we don't expect you to be any issues with businesses closing.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Okay, so if, if a existing store submitted a security plan and they had, you know, one or two areas that they needed to address, would they be allowed to stay open as they worked through those matters? Or would they be, would they be closed until they could address them?
From the kind of police perspective, we, in an open business who's trying to come into compliance, again, I think the only issue that would be is if somebody outright refused to comply. But otherwise, we would, we would do these inspections timely enough that they would, they would have the required time to, to get this into compliance if they haven't already, once the bill was, since they already know that this bill's coming. Once it's passed, if it's passed, then they should have the time to come into compliance.
Okay, thank you. Councilman here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District 7. Mr. Arbuthnot started to touch on this a second ago, but so how does the timing work with a new business? Is this something where they would need approval from the Police Department as a condition precedent to getting their permits from inspections and permits or site development plans or whatever it is they might be, whatever process they're going through with the county? Or is this something they do after, but before they open? How, how do these two processes work simultaneously? I guess that's for the sponsor, maybe. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Councilman Pruski, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So, so again, if you read the bill, these are annual inspections. I think the expectation is that, once this is done, there would be notice. And my understanding is the Community Relations Division in the Police Department usually communicates in a memo and letting people know what the requirements are. As far as a new business, that would be a P and Z and I and P piece in terms of what they know to be in compliance. Just like when you file a permit, there are other things that are required. So again, I can't speak for them or the department, but I would assume that they would let them know what the regulations are. But as far as the Police Department getting it done, you know, again, it's a timely fashion. Not, we're talking about 150 businesses here, we're talking about a limited number that they would know, and if somebody new came on board, I'm sure IMP and P and Z would let them know what the requirements are, and then allowing them to, to meet those requirements.
Ms. Hannah, is that a follow-up?
Well, maybe IMP or OPZ could tell me how they read this bill, whether, whether this would be a requirement before a permit is granted or once they're open, because I don't think it's clear in the bill what the process is.
So I'm not sure I understand the question, but they would have to get the approval before they open, before they started doing business, and then there's an annual review. So, and there's an application process, I mean, the bill does describe an application process and the, the measures that have to be put into place. My, maybe I didn't understand the question.
I'm just trying to understand for a new business, whether this would, whether this process on the security measures and their plan would have to be approved before a business gets a permit to, if it's a new business, if they're constructing or they're doing some kind of a tenant fit out of an existing building, they're redeveloping, are they going to have to go through this security approval before they get their, you know, permit to do their work, or is, is, does this happen subsequent to it? I'm just trying to understand the process piece of it, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's tied to the permit process. It's a totally separate thing, approval that they would need to be able to open for business.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Pruski, this could be a question for you, sir. I know we had an opportunity to talk about this yesterday, and I, I appreciate the conversation and kind of having a chance to let me talk through some of my questions with you in advance. So hopefully, this one's a little more tailored. It also could be for Captain Arbuthnot because potentially, you may have information on this. But there are facilities in the county that store firearms for owners. That could be storage facilities, but I know there are also specialty storage facilities that do actually just store firearms or ammunition for individuals. Is that something that is been looked at by you with respect to this bill? Captain Arbuthnot, is that something where you're seeing any of these same snatch and grab issues? Or is this really isolated to just gun shops and pawn shops? I just was curious about that in terms of the scope of what you're looking at, understanding what you're trying to address in terms of the concerns.
You can go ahead and answer.
Very proud, Madam Chair, thank you. So, so first of all, thank you for the question. Again, this was tailored to gun sales. Obviously, people know where they are. Let's be honest, I don't know how many people have guns in their homes, right? In terms of what they store, and it has nothing to do with that, it's your personal right and responsibility. But really, it was meant to those businesses where we know there's a problem, right? We, we know that there are places that are a potential threat and concern. You would hope privately, they do it on their own, right? We wouldn't have to have this bill, but that obviously did not occur, so that's the concern from my end. I'm certainly open to discussing other measures, but really, I think if you look at the, the way the bill is written as regard to gun shows and public safety measures from gun stores, again, it identifies those. If I'm saying something that's not correct by our Law Office or someone else, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe those are the two things that this is guided towards.
Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Dealer is specifically defined as the business of selling, renting, or transferring. So a business that just stores your gun for you because you don't want it in their house doesn't seem me to fall within the definition of dealer.
Thank you. Ms. Beedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My next question is regarding Section 126106 of the bill. The additional security measures in one, it lists exterior bollards, concrete barriers, steel barricades, planters, landscape boulders, or other physical barriers to prevent vehicular or other intrusion into the building. So the question that I have gotten from existing business owners is, what do they do if they do not own the property? And adding these types of obstructions violate their lease agreement and they're under a 10-year contract, they're two years into the contract, and they don't have the ability to add any of this because it's not their property.
Go ahead, Mr. Pruski.
Yes, I, I can speak at least to the intent of the bill, and then Captain Arbuthnot if he wants to jump in. So first of all, I'm not aware of that. Nobody reached out when I sent my bill out to every one of the businesses. The one thing was the cost piece, relationship to that. So I'd be happy to, you know, discuss that with them. But I, I guess, let's get back to the public safety measure on this, you know, from that end. Again, I, I think that if there's a potential threat and we're seeing this, and again, I don't know if this is that business, you have to weigh public safety, obviously, insurance, impact. So again, I really know how to respond to that in individual inquiry. But I would hope that any LEC that's trying to prevent a, a store or their property from getting guns stolen for a smash and grab, and also, if I'm correct, Captain Arbuthnot, there is some flexibility that was put in when they talked about the bollards, rocks, other things. So again, it's more of working to prevent that vehicle or other things from coming in. Again, I'm not a security expert, but from that end, that's why, if you look at it, there's different options that are there. And the whole point of this bill is to make sure that public safety is increased. But again, I can let Captain Arbuthnot talk about the measures and kind of the flexibility.
Go ahead, Ms. Sarah.
Thank you. Captain Arbuthnot, County Police. So yes, in some of these sessions, we had discussed different options that are flexible. So we were looking, not so much that they have all these things, but are they taking steps to limit vehicular vehicles going in, some of these have plate glass windows and things, even if they would have bars on the windows, some of these planters are removable, they wouldn't necessarily be permanent landscapes, things like that, things that would actually stop a vehicle from going in. That's what we're kind of looking for, so hopefully, if there is a situation where LEC and the, the landowner disagree that there are some things that could be removed, you know, temporary things that would stop a vehicle, but not necessarily changing the entire land permanently, that it would, would work for both.
Madam Chair, may I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate those comments from both Mr. Pruski and Captain Arbuthnot. I think, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, it, the concerns that I was hearing were in no way from the business owners saying, we don't want to. It was a matter of what happens if, as a business owner, I get to this point with the owner of the property that I'm leasing from. So I do appreciate the, the commentary on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to let Ms. Schewitt chime in. Thank you. Um, I would like to let Ms. Schewitt, uh, chime in.
Thank you. Linda Schewitt, Legislative Council. I just wanted to add, uh, a little bit to that because we did discuss having these, we, that's why the words exterior for the ballards, et cetera, concrete, and interior or exterior security gates, et cetera, so that you could have your choice. And part of that was because of the lease, but it's also unusual in a lease for the lease to require to prohibit fixtures that would change the, the nature of the establishment and doesn't, don't usually, um, prohibit the kinds of things that are listed here. Because you can pick them up, take them out, take them away, so it's not a big deal, is my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schewitt. And there were hands, um, but it looks like they have disappeared, so, um, I believe Ms. Hare had to step off. Uh, oh, Ms. Schewitt, is that? I'm sorry, your name is, okay, just double checking. Um, Ms. Councilman Hare, I know she had to leave, um, right around eleven thirty, which of, of course, when her bill would naturally come up, that's the way luck goes sometimes for a lot of us. Um, so it looks like, okay, I don't see her here, so we're gonna move on to Bill number one eleven dash twenty-one. And Mr. Pruski, you're the lead sponsor here, so if you would, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to take up the whole meeting now. But, um, no, thank, thank you all for, uh, for allowing me to, to speak on this bill. Uh, we had a great discussion. Uh, of course, I, uh, pondered that, uh, based upon what's there. And I know that we were talking about the local fiscal recovery funds and what we were trying to do. And, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, the administration, uh, prior in the discussion that if I ever had an inquiry, and I've had, uh, about the funds, that I simply make a call and, and ask questions. Uh, but I do believe that, um, there, there was a discussion that we could still, um, add a stipulation, uh, to obviously, um, you know, make it a part of resolution for approval. Um, and I know there was a discussion about the three and the four. Um, a- and I believe, and again, I, I've been on this council and served both in the minority and the majority. Uh, and when, when voters elect the majority, that's a part of the process, right? Uh, voters make a decision and that's how it works out. And so, uh, I believe that, uh, in looking at, there should be a path forward, right? Where, um, there's certain discussions about, um, you know, the threshold, the amount, uh, for some of these federal funds. And again, this is just a reincarnation, uh, of that bill. And, uh, I, I thank my colleagues for certainly sponsoring that, and I think this certainly makes sense. But I do want to reiterate again that if there is a question, uh, in regards to, uh, any federal funding, and actually, I, I know the auditor will agree with me on this, and it's not, um, the federal funding, but grants. I've spoken with her about audits, right? Our auditor is hired and works for us, and if you have a question in regards to any fund, whether it's federal or local, uh, we do inquiries, and so that's why the staff is there. So I, I want to reiterate that, that there's many paths and avenues. I, 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 I hope again, that based upon this discussion, discussion and prior, um, statements that, uh, you know, there's either mishandling or approval. Of course, we have differences on how money's spent. That's part of the nature of the process, right, in terms of the budget, and that's why it's set up that way. But again, um, I think the administration has been sending us emails, communication. And as I said, I will go to the auditor if I have any questions in regards to spending, because that's why we hired her. So, hey, thank you again, and, uh, I hope that everyone, uh, will consider supporting this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Barron?
Uh, thanks, um, Madam Chair. Um, I got a couple of folks here, if there are any, uh, technical questions. We got our Budget Officer, Chris Trumbauer, our, our Controller, uh, Ms. McQuade, and also from Finance, uh, Mr. Beard, um, and Laurie Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Uh, yeah, to, to echo Councilman Pruski's comments, um, uh, we think the administration, um, has been doing a, a pretty good job, if we do say so ourselves, of, of making information available. Um, whenever there are inquiries, either from council members or from the auditor, also members of the public watching, we do have a public portal, uh, so you can see, see these funds, uh, as they're going. And council is, as it related to the CARES Act, we're getting, uh, regular reports, uh, by the, by the code. We have been sending reports, even though we're not really required to for the ARP money. Um, so, all of that said, the administration does not have a problem at all with, with oversight, and it's a, a question for this council to decide, um, exactly the mechanics of that. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer if you have anything else to add. Um, but we're, we're comfortable with, uh, one eleven twenty-one.
Hi, for the record, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. No, I would have said all the same stuff Mr. Barron said, just much faster, so.
All right, thank you. Oh, there is another hand. Go ahead, Ms. Feedler.
Are we at the point of questions I didn't want to jump ahead of?
You're perfectly in time. Go ahead.
Okay, um, just for clarification, because I know we'll be talking about Bill one twelve twenty-one next, which has a number of council members required for a resolution to come forward because that, um, information is not clear in this bill. Um, if someone could just clarify, how many members of the council would be required to request the resolution to come forward, um, in this bill? Thank you.
I can turn back to Mr. Pruski.
Yes, it is four, as I mentioned, uh, in the other, um, section. Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any additional questions, we will go on to our last bill of the day. Uh, Bill one twelve dash twenty-one, and Ms. Feedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is nearly the same bill I introduced as emergency legislation with Bill ninety-two twenty-one, with added language for reporting requirements that came up in those discussions, um, just as a reminder. That bill received four votes, but emergency legislation, as we know, requires five votes. Um, it made sense to me to immediately bring it back, so I did make this request immediately following our votes on the previous bill, which took place on November fifteenth, based on the support of the council at the time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, Admin, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Uh, I think we've commented on, on the previous call sufficient.
All right, any ca- uh, questions from my colleagues? Well, it looks like, um, we have wrapped up our list, our agenda today, so I will just say thank you to everyone for coming today. Thank you to all, um, of the panelists from Admin and to my colleagues and everyone else tuning in. Um, we will see you all again at seven PM on this coming Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, in the council chambers. Have a great day. We're adjourned.